Hey everybody, welcome to another episode of Union or Bust. Juan Perez here, Organizing Monster. Please like and subscribe our podcast, our YouTube, Spotify, you name it. And also sign on to our Patreon, patreon.com backslash Union or Bust. We got a special co-host today, so Tommy Reich Sigler, UC Labor Center Director.
Hi, at the Labor Professor, and we are super excited today to welcome the Mayor of Imperial Beach, Paloma Aguirre, and also candidate for County Board of Supervisors, District One. Welcome Paloma, and thank you for being here today.
Thank you so much for having me, I really appreciate it.
Well, for the wonderful people that are listening today or watching today, can you talk a little bit about yourself? You know, introduce yourself. Who are you? Who is Paloma?
Who is Paloma Aguirre? Well, I'm the Mayor of the City of Imperial Beach. I also serve as a Vice Chair for the California Coastal Commission, and obviously, as you mentioned, I'm running for District One County Board of Supervisors, which encompasses most of the South Bay Cities, National City, Imperial Beach, Chilavista, and unincorporated areas like Spring Valley, La Presa, Lincoln Acres, Bonita. So, a little bit about me, I'm the daughter of Mexican immigrants who waited tables for a living. I was born in San Francisco. I moved back to Mexico when I was around eight. I spent most of my formative years there. That's where I started surfing, and I always wanted to come back and compete in surfing and go to school here. And my parents weren't down with that, but one day I had five hundred bucks to my name. I bought a one-way ticket to Tijuana because I had a couple of friends who lived in San Diego, who were like just crashing their couch or whatever. They made it sound easy. It wasn't. So I took a one-way ticket and arrived in Imperial Beach in two thousand and one, and then I just never wanted to leave. So, that's, that's, that's how I arrived to the area, and then, you know, I got involved with the sewage crisis because I didn't know that I had been surfing in polluted water for many years. And my predecessor, Serge DeDina, he's a former mayor, was putting up signs on the beach that said "Clean Water Now", and I asked him, "So what are you doing? What's that about?" He's like, "Don't you know you surf the most polluted beach in America?" I had no idea, and that's kind of what jumpstarted all of this. I got involved with that local nonprofit, and I started to better understand how much of an environmental injustice this whole thing is. So I've dedicated pretty much the last nineteen years of my life fighting all of this pollution, which has really worsened these last couple of years, really impacting people's health, people's lives, people's economy, and environment. So, that's one of the main reasons why I decided to run for office, and here we are.
Wow. When did you get into office? When did you get elected as Mayor?
Yeah. Oh, well, I got elected first in 2018. So, never been involved in politics or the party even. You know, I was just working two jobs, trying to put myself through school. And so, you know, in 2018, I decided, it was after Trump had gotten elected. We had a big sewage spill in, in South Bay. I was like, you know what, I, I feel like I can do a lot more by running. And I had seen how Serge had, you know, had success kind of elevating the issue when he ran for Mayor and became Mayor. So, I thought, well, let's give it a shot. So we ran a pretty grassroots campaign. Nobody really knew me, but we had a lot of support, and, you know, I came in first place against the incumbents, and that was really cool. I was the first Latina ever to be elected to a city that's over sixty, sorry, fifty-two percent Hispanic. So, that meant a lot, you know, to me, and, you know, since then, I've been prioritizing not just the sewage crisis, but housing affordability, increased amenities in our parks and recreation departments, so that our working families in Imperial Beach can really see a return on investment on the taxes they pay. So, with so much sacrifice, you know, so.
Did you, when you became a mayor, did you think like, okay, I'm gonna make this a career? I'm a mayor right now, and I'm gonna run for this next time, and then be in the Senate and the President eventually?
No.
Or you just ran for Mayor because you thought like you needed to make change in that?
Yeah, that's the primary reason. I've never seen it as, I, I don't see myself as a career politician. The way I see myself is a public servant that is trying to better the quality of life of my community. That's why I always put first is people first in, in the way that I govern and lead. And that's not always easy because you do operate in a realm of politics. And there are people who do operate from that perspective. So you have to navigate that in order to get what you're intending to do, whatever that is. In your case, right, we were talking earlier about organizing for, for good, right? And bringing better benefits to your union members. For me, it's about, well, one, yeah, we talked about the sewage crisis, but how do we make housing more affordable? How do we keep people housed? How do we put people in housing once they're, they're on the streets? How do we increase, you know, services and amenities for people who are already, you know, you know, within these communities? So, always looking at it from that perspective. So obviously, in this particular case, like I've been doing it for, for Imperial Beach for a while, but there's a lot of need countywide that we've been experiencing around housing, around homelessness, around our communities, really seeing a, a lack of investment, you know? I was telling you, Tommy, I was just in Spring Valley, La Presa yesterday. It had a very severe flooding on January twenty-second, which could have been prevented, right? I mean, we, we can't prevent these big atmospheric rivers and storm events, but there is a number of things that cause that flood. It was like, you know, trash and debris and sediment.
Not taking care of the infrastructure.
Not taking care of the infrastructure, not investing back in these communities. And, and this particular community is unincorporated, right? So there's no council, there's no mayor, there's only one representative on the county.
I know, I live in that unincorporated area, and, you know, it's really easy to get lost in the shuffle and ignored. So what would you do to make the folks in these areas that don't necessarily have specific individuals advocating, like district representatives advocating for them? How do you plan to reach out to folks and, and, and hear them and, and serve them?
Doing that, reaching out and hearing them and giving opportunities. I'm all about like open and transparent government. And that's something that it's like my ethos. So I've been doing it in IB. I, I'm, I'm not, you know, yet the District One Representative, but I'm like, okay, who do we talk to in Spring Valley?
But the fact that you actually came out, like, that never happens. Like, I've lived there for years, and that, like, we don't have representatives coming out. Like, the last representatives, obviously, we know the last one, and the one prior to that, because we were in District Two, and we got redistricted.
That's right, yeah.
I never saw.
Diane Jacobs?
Yeah, never saw her around.
That's, that makes me sad, man, because it's not that hard, like, you know? And, and it was just, not just the flooding, right? There were some other issues with lack of code enforcement and, and like some rampant, you know, type of businesses that shouldn't be there. Like, there's a lot of things that are easy lifts, that if there was enough attention paid there by people who can actually affect change, government.
So what would you prioritize?
Well, definitely, you know, some of the more serious issues that I saw and that they conveyed to me were the unsheltered. As you may know, the county lost ten million dollars from the state.
Yes.
Sadly, it should never have happened. That was unacceptable. And I think that, that, that money was supposed to go to a shelter that was, was very polarizing because the representatives didn't do the work. They didn't do the community grassroots work of reaching out, asking people what they thought, how they felt about it, like getting that feedback. They could have gained support for it if they have done their due diligence, but that didn't happen. So when they proposed it, it was fiercely rejected. So, instead of moving forward with it, they delayed it, and that's how the money was lost. It went to San Jose.
Lost opportunity, ten million dollars.
Ten million dollars, that's huge for an issue that is so underfunded.
Could that have supported for how long?
So I saw that, there's a, a wonderful opportunity, because I'm a big, big advocate for open space and free recreational opportunities, and the reservoir, for example, has this opportunity to create a trail around it where people can have access to this beautiful view of the reservoir and hike and bike and have your coffee on a bench and read about the park in an interpretive sign. And, and there hasn't been a lot of focus, there's been some pushback from, from, you know, other entities. And I'm like, why not? Like, Bonita has a park on the other side of the water, of the reservoir. Why doesn't Spring Valley, you know?
Why doesn't Spring Valley? That would be amazing.
Is, is the mayor position a full-time position?
Yes, it is, but it's technically part-time. So, we don't get paid. It's supposed to be part-time, but I spend all of my time as mayor. Like, so that's why I laugh. It's like.
Part-time, constantly doing work, having meetings. I mean, because you don't just want to stop the clock and be like, that's it, no more meetings? Because the whole idea behind being a representative is like, okay, you want to have a meeting that time? You can't say like, that's my day off. It's like a consistent kind of like, okay, well, you need to be still have access to you. People need to have access to you. So, do people recognize you, like in IB, when you go to the bars, restaurants? I always think about politicians becoming politicians, and their life just changed all of a sudden. First, they worked for a nonprofit, they can, they have, they have a very free life kind of deal. Free life as in like you have freedom to be anywhere you want and not have cameras in your face or people coming up to you. When you become a politician, I feel like a lot of that gets taken away, right?
You're no longer anonymous.
Exactly. So does that, did that already happen as a mayor?
Yeah, yeah, and that's, you know, a conscious sacrifice. Like, I don't mind it, like. But obviously, everywhere you go, you always have to be mindful that you're, you know, you're, you're an example, right? Like, so you want to make sure that you're not, you know, acting the fool, right? Because you, you never know what eyes are on you, and you don't want to give that bad example. At least me. I don't know if others feel that way. But yeah, I do, not just IB, I mean, everywhere in the South Bay. Like, I was just at the Chilavista Chamber breakfast yesterday, and people were like, thank you for what you're doing. So, so that's, that's a beautiful thing, that people see that, you know, you've been fighting for them, and, and they recognize that, and that's.
We actually got a little bit of celebrity status, me and Chris, when we went to Labor Notes, when we went to Labor Notes last year in April. Like, we were literally walking by the tables and getting shirts or whatever. People would call us, I like, Organizing Monster, you're union brother, and we're like, people call us that? And then they came up to us, took pictures with us. I swear to God, we had members from crew, from Ayatzi crew. We had like, like at least three or four different people do that, and that was the first exam, first time for us to have that kind of interaction where people recognize us because of this.
No, I'm sitting amongst celebrities. No, I'm good, I'm good. I'm gonna save the running for awesome people like Paloma. I, I'm here to support, so if I can support in any way, let me know. But I'm really, really curious about what your, like, I mean, you've done a lot at the coastal, because, you know, people recognize you because yes, you do advocate and you fight for the folks that are on the ground, living life, that aren't necessarily in, that are not necessarily invited to these spaces where decisions are being made. And so, you know, tell us a little bit about the work that you've been doing on the Coastal Commission. For the folks that don't know what the Coastal Commission, maybe talk a little bit about what, what it is, what, you know, how it protects residents of California?
Yep, so the Coastal Commission was created, it was voter-driven. So it was, the Coastal Act was a voter initiative back in seventy-six, and established the Coastal Commission. So the Coastal Commission's made out of twelve voting members and three non-voting advisory members. And half of them are people from the community, all up and down the California coast, and six are local elected officials. So, and then there's like North, North Central, Central, South Coast, and then San Diego District. So I represent the entire San Diego District. And basically, our, our mandate is to protect natural coastal resources, ensure that coastal access remains for everyone, so that it doesn't just become this, you know, affluent, inaccessible area that is only available to affluent people, right? And then, we make sure that any projects that are developed at the coast are done so in a sustainable way, where we continue to protect visual corridors, natural resources, and that access, so that everybody can enjoy it, because the coast is everybody's. So for me, it's really important that when we have these types of projects, they are good, you know, projects that bring in good-paying jobs, that have community benefits. Even though that's not our mandate, I want to make sure that, you know, those are the types of projects that we're seeing before us.
It totally makes sense, right? Because if you're creating jobs, like, those are jobs that are going to be invested back into the economy. So you want to make sure that they're good, family-supporting, sustaining jobs.
Absolutely.
Speaking of that, I have to throw it in there, the Gaylord being built down in Chilavista on the port. That's, that's gonna be our baby. Encore is in there.
Yeah, great.
Encore is the AV provider that we were talking about earlier, so they're, they're the provider in there. And it's gonna be like the second-largest Gaylord in the country. And that's Encore's baby. So Encore has contracts with the Gaylords across the country, and they like bounce shows and conventions across the country. That's what they do. So what do you think of big old things being built like that on the coast? Like, are you supportive of everything that's going on down there? Are you gonna be an advocate for the workers that are gonna be ending up? They're gonna be my workers, by the way.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
That's a good answer.
Not, not, not just your workers.
That's true. I'm being selfish.
No, it's tourism.
We're gonna have Teamsters down there. Everything.
It's gonna be like twenty-five hundred jobs. It's a four-point-five billion dollar investment. It's gonna be the economic engine of the South Bay. It's incredibly important because it's gonna bring, you know, local jobs too, right? Most of our South Bay workforce commutes north, and that's something that we need to start, you know, creating that economy locally so that we don't have those folks commuting, and that also helps the environment directly, right? That project, I think, was approved, I don't know, I think it was like ten years ago or fifteen years ago. So it was kind of a fluke because technically you wouldn't have had a, a building that tall right on the water. But, did it work out? Yeah. Will, will we probably see another building that tall on the water? Probably not. But the fact is, it's there, and we're all gonna benefit from it, and I'm super excited. And I talk about it all the time in the context of the sewage crisis too, because even though it's on the water, it's on the bayside. The only, the, well, the closest, like, beach access that this huge hotel will have is Imperial Beach in Corona. And those beaches are closed right now because of the sewage. So it's gonna have tremendous economic implications if we don't clean the beaches before that hotel opens.
So maybe like by having this hotel open, you know, like nothing's a problem until it becomes a problem kind of deal? So, once you start having bougie conventions, doctors, and all these important people coming through, now they're gonna be like, okay, where's the beaches? You know what I mean? Like, maybe it will help.
I think it will.
Bring attention to this issue of the sewage crisis.
I think it will have an even bigger champion, because you said the chamber was very active and supportive.
Yes.
With the work that you're doing on trying to get the sewage problem addressed. So I would imagine the Gaylord too would be huge advocates, because if that has an impact potentially on their, the folks that are gonna be coming in for their convention. No one wants to stay at a stinky hotel.
And, and that, you know, the Gaylord project is bringing other investments. I was just talking to a developer yesterday, who actually has a PLA. They, they just bought Chilavista, the old Chilavista Mall.
What?
Yes. It's, it's gonna be developed, and he was talking about how they, they're gonna bring in union jobs and stuff like that. So, and they're doing that because of the Gaylord, right? It's gonna be a cascading effect. That's gonna be really positive, so, yeah.
Yeah, I feel like here in San Diego, we're only developing. That's it. Like, it's a tourist city. Conferences, they love coming to San Diego. They tell us, when we're at the convention center and these touring people go to Florida, Arizona, New Mexico, wherever, they, when they get to decide where the next convention should be, most people select San Diego. They love coming to San Diego. Obviously, the weather, they make a trip out of it. Bring their families and how they make a trip out of it. But also, bragging again, because of the AV and like the, the, the workers that they have here in San Diego, one-twenty-two is one of the best locals in the whole country for Ayatzi. Like, some places, the, the show that came in Ash in December, other locals can't staff it. They only have like two different places that they can go to, and San Diego is one of them. So they have to come down to San Diego, because we have the manpower, we have the training and the education, and I don't know.
Oh, I love it.
Just got the juice. But, that's cool. I was gonna ask about housing. I don't know if this is controversial or not, but Tara, Tara, I like Tara. Good thing that she won. Because of her, we got the grants. So again, I'm selfish. But she's talking about Blackstone. Blackstone owning, buying housing.
Yeah.
And that's what artificially inflates the house, the housing market.
Yeah.
And I've been talking about this for years, and now I see her on social media talking about it. We're supposed to have her on the podcast, and I want to talk to her about that. But what, where's your stance on how do we solve the housing crisis? I get it, that we have the homeless problem, and I want to address that too. But everybody's like one paycheck away from, all of us, right? One medical bill away from getting bankrupt. Like thirty percent of homeless people have jobs. So it's not that they're lazy or anything like that. They have jobs.
The wages have not kept up with the, the cost of living.
Yeah, so I think the homeless crisis is like a multi-pasaded issue. You can't just solve it by saying, we're gonna create a building and then house people.
No, that's not, yes.
Okay.
And I talked about it in my Voice of San Diego article. Did you get to? You know, I, I got slammed for it on Twitter, but whatever. But, this trickle-down housing economics isn't working. The solution isn't just build, build, build. You have to build, and you also have to keep people housed, and you also have to build for all levels of income, not just market rate. I don't know about you, I can't afford a six-thousand-dollar-a-month, like, apartment. I don't know, like.
Most people.
Most people can't. Most people can't. And you log on to just a regular, like, two-bedroom apartment in San Diego, and you get anywhere between four K and six K.
Yeah, it's ridiculous.
So, Blackstone, I've been public on this. I've been very public, publicly critical of Blackstone. I, I, they've been buying up all these units and artificially inflating market rate. So I think it's important to take that two-pronged approach. You can't just build and not try to protect people who are currently housed. It doesn't make economic sense, because once people are on the street, it costs you billions of dollars to try and get them back into housing, not to mention the fact that they may fall into, you know, more issues around mental health or addiction, or even public health, right? We had a huge public health crisis around Hep A and under former Mayor Faulkner. So, I think, just to give you an example, we are considering, now I can talk about it, because it, the agenda was published yesterday. We are considering an ordinance to help people who are displaced without being at fault. So it's called a Just Cause ordinances, yeah, so.
I worked on Just Cause ordinances for the City of San Diego.
Oh, did you? Were you on the working group?
Yeah, I was.
Yeah, so.
So, and it's, and it's really interesting, because Just Cause, like, you would think that evictions would primarily be Just Cause, but a lot of, there's been trends where folks have been evicted, so that they could fix up the place and then increase the rent to market rate, and, you know, basically capitalize on, you know, and it's making the housing inaccessible for folks that were living there in the first place.
That's right. And they call it substantial renovation. When they just go and paint the walls a certain color, and they jack up the price, because there's certain restrictions now at, at the state level. AB fourteen eighty-two prohibits any landlord from increasing the rent more than ten percent or, or CPI inflation. But anyway, you can't increase more than ten percent a year, your rent. So sometimes people want to make more than that, so they kick people out by saying they're gonna renovate the place, and then they can jack up the price at market rate.
But then it leaves people just on the street. Like, if you're, if you had affordable housing at one point, like, if you're paying for a two-bedroom for two thousand dollars, which you can't find anymore, then, and then all of a sudden, the landlord's like, oh, we gotta, we gotta remodel, we have to do this, then you have thirty days to find a new place. It puts people in a very difficult predicament. So they're, so, so, so you're, when you're talking about multi-pronged approach, so you're talking about keeping people in to their homes, what about covenants that expire for affordable housing or naturally affordable, natural occurring for affordable housing?
That's, that's the other thing you have to protect too, and something we, we look at, at the Coastal Commission, for example. Or, you know, there's another example, in Imperial Beach, we have a mobile park that is natural occurring housing that was bought, and there was some bad practices from the previous landlord that were trying to harass the, the residents out of homes. And those are some of the last lines of defensive you will, before people become homeless. There were people on fixed income, elderly, people on oxygen. There was, there's one veteran that lives there. Thankfully, we, you know, fought against those folks being displaced, and we were able to pass a law at the state level to protect them, because what they were doing is, because they were under some state law, weird law, where they were able to push them out. They had to come back in every six months, so that they didn't become permanent tenants. It was a weird loophole.
Yeah, I remember that loophole.
Yeah, so we, we, we passed a bill with Assemblymember Alveres to help eliminate that and protect those folks. And now they are able to stay there, and they're there, continuing to pay, you know?
Blackstone, the Blackstones of the world.
Well, that's, that's, that's the thing, right? And they have this insane amount of money, and.
Well, they have the multifamily housing portfolio. They bought the largest portfolio of multifamily housing units in San Diego, along with RV parks, and they jacked the rent up. They like to argue that we made them livable, like, we turned slum, you know, residencies into livable spaces, but at the same time, how many people did they put out on the street as a result of, you know, and how much did their profit margin increase based on the portfolio that they, you know, built?
That's, that, that's right on the money. So that's unfortunately those things that you have to balance, right? And, and, and it's politically, right? We're talking about doing the right thing, which is governance, good governance. But then, sometimes good governance costs politically, right? Because then you have these private interests or special interests, for-profit industry that pour tons of money into candidates that will see for their interest, right? For example, Kevin Faulkner, right? He had millions of dollars of the realty industry and other, other.
He was very well-funded.
Yeah, so I'm not trying to ding one side or the other. I'm just saying, like, you can't just take one approach. You have to balance things out, and, you know, if, if no one's happy, at least that means you're trying to find that perfect balance. But it's insane to me that you just think building alone is going to prevent homelessness, because it's not. And this, we, we ask ourselves, why are we in this homeless crisis? Well, because.
Look at how many vacancies there are downtown, huge condos, market rate, like, all.
Just sitting there.
Just sitting there.
It's insane.
Yeah, and Blackstone owns Encore, and some of the hotels.
Oh, they do?
Yeah, and some of the hotels. Awesome. No, we want this, we want that heat. I mean, we beat them in twenty-twenty.
Were they part of the, 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 the price fixing for the rent? There is like a bunch of companies that were using an algorithm to fix, yeah, an AI algorithm, which is another thing that we have, we should be talking more about.
Tara brought that up, right? Didn't she bring a board letter?
On behalf of, the, the fact of the matter is, is that these organizations, these companies, use technology, advanced technology to price fix, to fix the market, to fix the rate of housing, the cost of, like, the cost of housing. And so like, we're seeing these astronomical prices, especially in San Diego County, where it's, you know, now you, you have, you can, like, a house, the average cost of a house is one-point-one million dollars.
Yeah, most of them.
Blackstone.
Blackstone. They can write me a check and I can stop talking shit.
Private equity.
I thought that was Monster. Monster was gonna be.
Monster is a sponsor, Coca-Cola is a sponsor.
Coca-Cola? You know they kill organizers.
No, but that's the thing, like, I think people getting displaced out of their homes, they don't want people to own homes. They don't want people to own anything, because with a home, you have equity, you have generational. Because with a home, you have equity, you have generational wealth. Stability with you and your family and your kids. Now they don't want anybody to own anything and that really, that's why I'm taking that on too, like housing because. The only reason I was able to buy a house is because I bought my parents' house at not market value. Yeah, that's the only way I was able to buy the house.
But I would even argue that it goes beyond owning your own property and just the fight, having financial stability where. I mean, think about who, who wins when everyone is in this precarious, precarious position of. One paycheck away or one medical bill away from being on the street. Like who wins? These capitalist employers, the people that, the one percenters, they take advantage because we are now so focused on trying to just survive. That that takes time from, away from not just thriving and living, but also participating and be, um, in, 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 and creating a more democratic. Society, right? Like if you're worried about how I'm gonna pay my bills, like I don't wanna lose my house or how am I gonna feed my kids, like. You're not necessarily thinking about, okay, I'm gonna go to that city council meeting and I'm gonna give, you know, give him my opinion about like why they should have X, Y and Z.
That's so right. That's so on point. Um, and that's why it's important to be a voice for those who are voiceless, right? That they're not by choice. It's because they're having to tend to their kids' needs. They're, they're working two, three jobs. They're. They're tired and exhausted that they don't participate in the democratic process. People like us holding the line, right? Like I think of Jose, I think of Marcus Bush, I think of myself. We still, well, they, they still maintain day jobs. I had to quit my day job, right? So I could fully dedicate myself to this, but that comes at a cost too, right? So it's like, everybody's exhausted and we're just trying to hold the line for those who can't speak up for themselves. Because at the end of the day, then you have people who get elected in office who are retired, affluent. Or you know, a certain demographic that doesn't always represent the communities that they've been elected to, right? So I think it's, it's, it's important. I'll just add about around housing, um, because we talked about. You know, uh, keeping people housed, but it's also important to invest in projects that have affordable housing. And we haven't had our fair share in South County in District One. Uh, I was reading up out of the thirty-eight affordable housing projects that the county is involved in, only seven are in South County. And we're the highest rate, we have the highest rate in District One of people who are overburdened. Which means that they're paying more than thirty percent of their income to keep a roof over their head. And we have the lowest median household income in the county. So why aren't we getting more affordable housing projects in in District One? And that's one of the things I wanna focus a lot on.
And and you know, like, um, climate change, like people are getting pushed out of San Diego. And so they have to travel. They, they live across the border to work here in San Diego. So that's climate change issue too, right? Like we're using our cars, traveling, burning gas.
Contributing to.
Contributing to climate change. Yeah, I know, I said it kinda wrong, but.
No, no, no.
Uh, I normally don't talk about climate change.
No, but it's contributing and it's also an effect of climate change too, because people are being pushed away from areas that. You find relief when we have these heat waves like into East County because it's more affordable, but then. You tend to come to the coast because the days are too hot over in El Cajon or Centi or or in Tijuana and that also creates some dynamics that. We wouldn't have had if we didn't have climate change.
So another thing, and I know this is kinda like a gotcha question. For homelessness though, like I think it's a multi-pronged approach. I think we need to attack. Housing costs, affordable housing, uh, rent control, uh, wages have to come up. Because you can't afford anything on minimum wage, uh, which is like sixteen something an hour or seventeen, ten an hour or something like that in San Diego. Uh, but another one is also homelessness is mental health. Like I know Chris likes to talk a lot about that. So he likes to talk a lot about that. And to me, it's like about healthcare. Like we're, we're like, I'm a big old Bernie bro. That's why I supported him in twenty sixteen and twenty twenty because. He talked about mental health and healthcare for everybody and talking about universal healthcare. We tried to pass Calcare here in California. And then Newsom kinda like swiped the rug under these people and they didn't even go for a vote. Cause we, we're talking to the organizers that were trying to push Calcare here in California. So would you, how, what's a solution for healthcare then? Like I'm down for universal healthcare. I don't know. I know it's a Tommy is too, but like, how do we push that or how do we help San Diego County? If we can't push it across the state, how do we help our residents here in San Diego?
Say we can't.
How do we do it?
Well, I've been working closely with the Working Families Party. That's one of their core, um, initiatives. One of four is universal healthcare in, in, in California and I, I think we can get there. I think we need to elect the right people. That's the issue. We have a super democratic majority in both chambers in the legislature. Think about that. The, the Assembly, the Senate and the Governor are all the same party. Why haven't we been able to do that? And coming back to these.
Like Democrats are not always gonna be working people's friends and depending on who is. Like paying them or paying for their campaigns, like we cannot rely on just the, the D behind their name. To say that they're gonna be working and advocating for the best interests of working families and working people. And you're absolutely right. We've had a super majority for how long, but then we have a governor who likes to be anti-labor and veto bills like. Autonomous, like having someone present in, in a semi that's autonomous driving vehicle, like. I don't wanna be driving next to a semi that has no driver, that has no one to over like to, to, to view. So yes, you're, you're absolutely right and it's, it's about electing the right folks. So how do we know they're the right folks? How do we, how do people know you're the right person to elect?
Oh, that's a good question. Um, well, I think you gotta look at the, the work that you've done, right? I mean, I think that you don't talk the talk, you walk the walk and you demonstrate what you're able to do. I think somebody who puts people first, who puts community first, um, who's not afraid to call out the status quo. Um, is somebody that you can, you know, see as someone who will move forward, working families values. Right? Um, in the sense of talking back about the governor, I've been critical of the governor because he's left. Labor behind, he's left us behind. We feel extremely disenfranchised and frankly neglected on the sewage issue. He came down here and said, a state of emergency wouldn't have helped at all. He said, and no, let me quote. It would have meant nothing. Tell that to the hundreds of elderly who have COPD right now. The children that have asthma, that's not, they never had asthma before, the women who are suffering. Chronic migraines that they haven't been able to get, uh, you know, rid of in over a year because of the sewage crisis. And that's just like one element of the, of the equation. So how do we find these leaders? I think it's important to. See where their values are, where their work is and who's funding them, right? At the end of the day, who's contributing to their campaigns? Ideally, we would wanna level the playing field and get rid of Citizens United and maybe do, you know, it's one of the.
That would be the dream.
Like, you know, every, each candidate having the same amount. Maybe even tax paid, funded or whatever.
Yeah, having a, a specific budget and they can't go.
You can't go over it and we pay for it. I would be willing to pay for it as a taxpayer and then. You know, you get elected because of your values and your philosophy and your worldview rather than how much money you have in the bank.
Yeah, and to piggyback on that, like, how do we know, support you and this and that? We can't support anybody, we sold out. But, uh, but like, we saw what happened, because we talked about Democrats, right? We saw what happened this last year with the election, like people are done, like they didn't come out to vote. And they let Trump win or whatever happened, happened. But the vote didn't come out in, for the Democrat. And I think people are disenfranchised, people are over it. It's, uh, the, I think like the mask is off and people see how people talk on one side of their mouth and then the other side of the mouth at the same time. Just like you talked a little bit about Gavin Newsom. So right now, this is gonna be a special election. How do we get people to come out to vote? In this special election, there's a bunch of you guys running in this election. So and not. To, for them to come out, but also how do we motivate them to come out? Because they are angry at the system, at the Democratic Party, at the parties and, uh, and I'm one of them, I'm not gonna lie, so.
No, I think we all are there. I, I talk about that. I've been, I talked about that in my article, The Voice of San Diego, um. We're tired. We're tired of the shenanigans. We're tired of the polarization. We're tired of the empty promises on both sides. We're tired of the fighting, of the harassment, of the xenophobia, of the racism, like all of it. We're all tired. Everybody's just trying to put food on their table and keep a roof over their head and things are the most expensive they've ever been. San Diego is one of the, if not the, the most expensive city to live in the country. It shouldn't be that way, right? It shouldn't. We are all working our butts off for dirt pay and things aren't getting better. So I think that, you know, how do, how do people, that's a good question because that's the challenge, right? Is special elections, nobody foresaw this. I think we're all tired just from the last election, right? Like supporting our candidates and getting them across the finish line. And then suddenly we have this situation, which is, I'm gonna say it, it's unfortunate. Because, um, people are tired. They already went to vote in November. Now they're being asked to come potentially, right? Come back and vote, um, in March and you know, people spent a ton of money on their candidates the last election and. Now they gotta go vote again. So that's gonna be the challenge, is getting people to turn out to vote. Getting them excited about what the future holds. I think that I can bring that excitement. Uh, I know that we certainly don't want, uh, you know, a candidate that is. You know, supported by the Waken Church and things that are really on the extreme and.
Oh, you mean the QAnon folks?
And, uh, you know, or, or people who are just gonna continue with the status quo.
Okay, um, that was a good answer.
What is something that you want people out there, especially in the dis, in District One, to know about you?
I get you done. I think that's first and foremost, like, I like to take challenges head on. I like to. Find solutions for them. I, I don't, I'm not about like this grandstanding. I'm not about like empty rhetoric. I'm about putting my head down and getting the work done. So if there's, uh, flooding issues in Spring Valley. Let's figure it out. It's not rocket science. Let's get taken care of. Uh, Chila Vista has its tremendous homeless issue, homelessness issue. Like why? We shouldn't be, you know, like we gotta put our part and invest money in shelters and behavioral health beds. We need at least eighteen thousand behavioral health staff by twenty twenty-seven, like.
What are we doing to like prep for that?
Yeah, and, and, and I'm sorry, but our predecessor dropped the ball on a lot of that. There were some partnerships that were already in the works. That fell, fell through because the leadership wasn't there. And that's just the reality. So I know. Uh, people see how I operate. I, I am someone that, um, will work across the aisle with the Republicans if I need to. I don't care as long as you're about putting people in community first and getting stuff done. That's to me what all that matters. So I will work with whoever and it, again, if you're. The same side of the aisle and have a D in front of your name and all you do is just nothing, like then no.
Sit on a bunch of committees and never actually do representing, uh, represent your constituents. As someone that is a constituent of the former. I can say that. Didn't feel like I, I was served in my district, but that's my personal opinion.
Yeah, um, I'll, I'm not in the district. Um, I'm, I'm registered and I'm in D four. But I do have a question with, uh, with everything that's going on in the news right now in LA with the fires that are burning and then. Now we see articles coming out about whose fault it is and then the water, they didn't invest into, um. Those reservoirs and then there was no water on the, on the, on the fire hydrants and then LA kinda like. Like not defunded, but, uh, didn't really, uh, put money into firefighting in LA. So there's already like the fire chief got fired in LA this week. So there's a lot of things that are going on now and a lot of spotlights are being put on like systemic issues. Why is there a billionaire owning seventy percent of the water in California?
Wonderful, then, then, the, it's the agriculture people.
So like there, now there's like spotlights coming out and people want answers because now the millionaires are getting like threatened. And now people are angry and people have been displaced. So now it brings it to here to San Diego. If that can happen in LA, it can probably happen in San Diego. I mean, we had those.
The three fires that converged into one big fire and it was like, it was.
It was worse. Yeah, I mean, worse in the sense that we had more deaths. Uh, maybe it wasn't as costly because this was literally the most expensive area of the entire state. But yeah, to your point, now that it's affecting billionaires, you're gonna have a, a lot more interest in. Taking a second look and understanding what was wrong, right? I was also reading about, um, how Native Americans, that, that was all. Chaparral habitat, which is a certain type of, of, of plant. They would do these control burns. Uh, every so often to avoid these big like wildfires from happening. So. We, we've come away from a lot of these more sustainable practices that could have been done. There was a lot of, um. You know, that in, in addition to having a scarcity of sufficient water and infrastructure, right? There's, there's a lot of things that contributed to this, uh, terrible like disaster. That could have been prevented or could have been at least, you know, we could have been better prepared for that and. To your question about San Diego, I mean, it's, it's. It's important that we're looking at that, right? We do have a good wildfire, um.
We do.
Forecasting center, uh, at, at CGNE, it's one of like the most high-tech centers. We have UCSD, we'd have, they have some of the most advanced technology and.
Sense like the humid, like the to the.
Yeah, it's really impressive. So we're very lucky to have all that technology here. We are, we're lucky that some of the areas are not as encroached, like Malibu, the Santa Monica Canyons are kinda like right. There like, we're a little bit more like, um, the geography is a little bit more flat here. But then we have the challenges of urban sprawl moving into areas on the east side of, of the county that. Yeah, we need housing, but why are we building in areas that are prone to wildfires? Why don't we increase density in areas that we already have housing? So those are the, some of the conversations that. I'm pretty much expecting to have in the next four years at the county that we're gonna have to tackle.
And we have to take care of our firefighters and I sound very like.
No, absolutely.
Like remember Darryl.
They're amazing. I was just with Chief, uh. Andy yesterday.
Shout out Darryl.
Uh, the San Miguel Station, my fire chief.
Literally down the street from my house.
Yeah, I was with the fire chief there and IB Fire Station Chief French. They're always like, um, putting their lives at risk and out there helping. I know National City, Chila Vista, they've all sent folks up there. So yeah, no, firefighters are our heroes, man.
That's why I talk about them a lot too, because, uh, like Darryl was saying, saying that seventy percent of them end up getting cancer.
From their gear.
From their gear.
From their gear.
That's insane. I'm like, oh shit. So they're having a lot of like PTSD issues, suicide issues, cancer issues. And then when I, what, what after like reiterate, or whatever, relive that what happened in Chila Vista, what Darryl was fighting for, but.
Parody?
Parody. Yeah, he was fighting for parody.
Like officers like significantly more, but like firefighters who put their. Lives at risk a lot of the time, like they'll send in firefighters on, on cases where they don't wanna send police, but they're highly dangerous situations. And so they're put in a more volatile, in more volatile situations. They're working overtime, they're working overnight. Like the conditions that they're subjected to and the fact of the matter is, it comes down to. These workers are essential and we need them, but when they need us, like. Yeah, it's like our back is turned on them, like. Um, oh, you're important until you ask for an increase in your raises or you ask for better equipment to, to not contribute to. You know, growing health concerns, right?
Yeah, yeah. No, it's, it's a challenge for sure. We, we just, uh, we had a equity study done at the request of two, two, one. Down in Imperial Beach and we went through the negotiations and there was a lot of that disparity that some had. You know, gotten raises, others had and even though they had been with us for a long time. So absolutely, we went and gave them, you know.
The fact that. The council actually entertained, like doing a study in the first place.
Well, and that's the, talking about working across the aisle, look, you know, and I've talked about this before, like it's, IB is. Democratic majority, but we ended up with three non-Democrats on council and I could have been like, well, screw you, you know, like you trashed me during the campaign. Are you this or that? I'm like, no, cause who loses? The people. So I'm like, let's put that aside. We're gonna work well. We're gonna be respectful with each other. And even though we all, don't always see eye to eye, we've been doing that hard work and I'm really grateful. They, they supported the increase. For two, two, one and IB and, you know, they could have said no and you know, be like, okay, screw you.
I think that's a testament to the work that you've been able to do and I think, you know, earlier you said. I think that's a testament to the work that you've been able to do. And I think, you know, earlier you said, like, you know, when you're on when you're on part of the supervisor, the board supervisor of the county, like being able to bring folks together that aren't necessarily have a, that don't necessarily have that D behind their name, but because you all but because you all have identified, like these are the things that are important to the folks that we're supposed to represent, like let's focus on that. Like that's amazing. And it's it's challenging sometimes for a lot of politicians to do that because how many politicians do we know that have really large egos and aren't able to like?
No, you gotta find common ground. That's your starting point. And there's always gonna be common ground, man. Like we're human, like there's gonna be common ground. Yeah, the the other social stuff, maybe I disagree with you, but like Joel Anderson, for example, has, you know, an interest in behavioral health and also has his district, has, there's a lot of poverty there that's comparable to District One. How do we work together and move that?
Actually serves his constituents very well. Like even when he was in the Assembly, like he like constituent services, like being able to answer to the folks that he represents. He's been able to do that very well.
Yeah, he was endorsed by Labor, so.
Oh, that's right. He was at the Labor political.
Yeah, it's so funny. He just.
I I've called him like on the sewage stuff and he's been very responsive.
That's a beauty about like uh reaching across the aisle that you can actually get work done instead of having the ego and be like, well, you have a different letter in front of your name. That's a beauty of labor and unions is that, like, we don't care, like, you're Republican, you're Libertarian, you're a Democrat. It's all good. We're all part of the same contract anyways. So that's, so the one advice that I give to everybody is always kitchen kitchen table economics. That's what we talk about here on the podcast and that's what we're talking, what you were talking about earlier today. It's like people need to be able to pay the rent, buy food, uh have security, be able to send their kids to college. All those basic needs and they're getting taken away from us little by little because it's too damn expensive to live anywhere. Um, my, my girlfriend, her mom is about to move to Texas and buy a house out there because she can't afford anything here in San Diego. That's, that's, I think that's ridiculous. Like we're losing people.
Constantly, constantly losing people. And it's, but it's the trend that we're seeing across the nation. Cause even I just came from this like technology summit, um and they were, I was talking to some like workers, hotel workers and they were talking about saying, oh, we love San Diego, but we can never move there. It's so expensive. They're like, it's getting expensive here too in Nevada. I remember folks used to move from San Diego to Nevada to get like a cheap house, a hundred fifty thousand, two hundred thousand. Now the houses are are closer to what we are paying. They're not as, not as as high, but they've they've shot up significantly.
Because there's nowhere else like.
We're getting pushed out. Everyone's getting pushed out. So I think that's why housing is such a big issue for everybody. It doesn't matter who it is, even if you have a house. Like what's going on right now in LA, I'm I'm sure a lot of people are gonna lose. They're gonna lose out. I saw that their insurance companies were like taking them off of the fire coverage or whatever. And then like what happened, I'm a conspiracy theorist. I think that there's something deeper to it, but we don't have to talk, we don't have to entertain that right now. But uh, but yeah, I know we're about to reach that hour and like I mentioned to you that that's how much we shoot for. Is there anything else or any other questions that you have to tell me?
What is, what is, what do you like to do for fun Paloma, aside from surfing?
Man.
In hopefully non-polluted waters.
I know. I try to try to surf at least once a week, uh in Ocean Beach. Yeah, I try. Um, I'm just pretty laid back. I like to listen to records and hang out with my dogs and yeah, and sometimes I go watch my husband when he's playing a show, so that's fun.
That's fun.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah.
Like the, you're the most relatable there I've ever met in my life and just being able to like see someone that, you know, I feel like you can relate to, accomplish and do so much and 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 support the community and and the ways that you have and advocated for like us in in so many ways is is just pretty amazing. So thank you for the work that you have been able to do, you know, before, even before you became an elected official, like, cause it started somewhere. It started somewhere. And the fact that you you continue to advocate for folks in our communities is is pretty amazing.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. And I appreciate being with you all and being with like-minded folks, uh you know, cause we have to stick together, cause we're gonna have an interesting next four years, that's for sure.
We will.
Yeah, well, there you go. Um, well, you're on the hottest labor podcast and maybe you're at the Union or Bus bump, but we cannot endorse, like I said. So uh that was another episode of Union or Bus. Like, subscribe, um and sign on to our Patreon again, Patreon. We have eight now. We started with one, now we have eight. So, all right, everybody, catch you later.